Hey, it's him.
Hey, never mind, it just popped on.
Okay, good, yeah, it looks like they're going through it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
This is set up to want to accept those.
Okay. So is Joseph working on it then?
Uh, Joseph's not, he's on vacation.
Oh.
He's working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Amy says I can hear Tim and Jim, but both very muted.
This conference will now be recorded.
So I'm getting messages from other people that are online, but we don't hear anybody in the room.
And they could hear each other. They can hear them.
It could just be that one mic. Somebody else there could speak up on a mic, maybe we could hear them.
You're not hearing this, Jen, are you?
I did hear that.
I think she might have heard it through my phone now, because...
Oh, right, that's great.
She could have heard it through my phone, Gary.
What's happening?
She may have heard it through my phone.
Right.
Does that mean that I should call in? On my phone?
Jen, I'm not sure yet, they're working on it. I can just put you on.
So that you can... You know, be part of the meetings.
Okay, or I can call in, but I'm just wondering about, there's 11 people online that, you know, aren't gonna get a chance to weigh in. So that obviously would be a decision for Pat.
Right. Would we... Did you think you'd cancel it?
All these people are not one computer expert.
Check.
Wait, so who said all these people?
I did.
Who's I?
I heard that correctly.
Okay, so I can hear Pat now.
Oh, good, I fixed it.
Good. Thank you so much.
Way to go, Pat.
You are the man.
Can you fix everything on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, we're working on that, give me, uh, give me three, just kidding. You're going back.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
All right, thank goodness for technology. Okay, so we were on citizen concerns, we were getting that list, it's right there, I believe. Uh, please try to concentrate on, you know, we're talking about the area that we want to do it tonight and working with N2N. Uh, we've heard a lot about this already, and I will remind you that, like the councilors, you have a three-minute time limit. So I'll get my timer out here, 'cause I've been getting some flack about that. So...
Where's my list?
Just put it right in front of me. All right, Pat Ross, on the subject of homelessness.
Hello, Councilman, my name's Pat Ross, 1714th Street. I'm concerned about the location that you guys are trying to put it on. As a business owner, nobody has contacted me to my feelings on it, or my partners. And I think that's something that should be done, no matter where you're putting it. None of the people that I know of that live in that area have been notified. That I'm talking about, they were talking about putting it over on, uh, Tishner Street, if I'm not mistaken, that's one 80-foot section over on Tishner Street. We have not been notified, you know, it was just a possibility. Okay, that's what I'm trying to find out. My suggestion is, yes, I know that something has to be done, as far as the courts go, everything. I really think that you guys should, that the council should appoint a committee, those that are for it, and those that are against it, so we can come together and figure out something, because all we're doing right now is bickering, bitching back and forth, and it's not good for anybody, it's not good for the town, it's dividing it badly. So that would be my suggestion. And I would be more than happy to be on the side that is against it.
You're here.
So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Pat.
Can we ask questions?
What's that?
Can we ask questions?
No, I mean, no, I mean, that's the nature of it, it's, 'cause we don't want to, that's how we get into the, be on three minutes every time, yeah.
Take a note, and then you could mention it, your comment.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to Kyle Grabowski?
I have to agree with Pat Russ. I think there should be a committee, like he said, I think that the current location by Ray's is very suitable at the current moment, until we find a better location as of maybe a building that's not being used by anybody. Maybe building tiny homes, something that would put them out of the eye of the public, but also giving them the best interest for health and for food and showering. I think supplying jobs for them around the city, picking maybe a grocery store or the library, or doing something productive like that, so they can earn money, I think would be the best bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you quickly state your name and address for the record? I should ask you.
Kyle Grabowski, 1780 Jackson Street.
Thank you very much.
It's Kyle.
All right, it looks like, um, Michael and Milton.
Michael Melton Kovalchuk.
That's what I said, thank you.
Oh, nothing's easy in life. My name is Michael Melton Kovalchuk. My husband, Alex, and I live at 52417th Street, right across from the wetlands and right behind Coastal Swag. We currently house four of our homeless population. Um, we're a part of Neighbor to Neighbor. Basically, what we do is we feed people. With the help of common good, with the help of various people in the community who just drop things off to us, and even from the neighbors themselves, our homeless neighbors actually are providing food to help feed the group, which is something that probably people don't expect to hear. Um, we have, we feed probably a dozen people, three meals a day plus snacks, from 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night. We have had as many, just a total roster, we've had about 25 to 27 people come through. Not everybody, not everybody lives around here anymore. Um, right now, having folks next to Ray's is convenient, we have a lot of seniors. There are people out there on disability, there's even more that need to be on it based on their health issues. Right now, there's nowhere for people to go. If it's stormy weather, rainy, their choices are, if the library's open, maybe they can go there, or they go to my porch, or they stay inside a tent, which is often sometimes not very, not very suitable. So I just wanted to say that I am for anything that would help us with taking care of our homeless neighbors, because not everybody asks to be homeless, not everybody's a criminal. We are all people, and we all need to have the same consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Toad Porter.
I don't really know what I want to say, which is a little unusual. I am here really to kind of represent Sue and Dave Gleason, who live in the house adjacent to Ray's Woods. And, um, I believe strongly that we need to help our homeless population, and I applaud the work that Neighbor to Neighbor has done. I'm real concerned that we don't have the services we need to help our homeless people. I'm also very concerned that, um, we have people coming into the homeless settlement next to Ray's and harming the people who are there, and the animals that are there. And I'm concerned that there are some of the animals there that are running loose, harming people.
You're not hearing this, Jen, are you?
I did hear that.
I think she might, she might have heard it through my phone now, because...
Oh, right, that's great.
She could have heard it through my phone, Gary. She may have heard it through my phone.
Right.
Does that mean that I should call in? On my phone?
Jen, I'm not sure yet, they're, they're working on it.
I can just put you on. So that you can, you know, be part of the meetings.
Okay, or I can call in, but I'm just wondering about, there's 11 people online that, you know, aren't gonna get a chance to, um, weigh in. So that obviously would be a decision for Pat.
Right. Would we... Did you think you'd cancel it?
All these people are not one computer expert.
Check.
Wait, so who said all these people?
I did.
Who's I?
I heard that correctly.
Okay, so I can hear Pat now.
Oh, good, I fixed it.
Good. Thank you so much.
Way to go, Pat.
You are the man.
Can you, can you fix everything on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, we're working on that, give me, uh, give me three, just kidding. You're going back.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
All right, thank goodness for technology. Okay, so we were on citizen concerns, we were getting that list, it's right there, I believe. Uh, please try to concentrate on, you know, we're talking about the area that we want to do it tonight and working with N2N. Uh, we've heard a lot about this already, and I will remind you that, like the councilors, you have a three-minute time limit. So I'll get my timer out here, 'cause I've been getting some flack about that. So...
Where's my list?
Just put it right in front of me. All right, Pat Ross, on the subject of homelessness.
Hello, Councilman, my name's Pat Ross, 1714th Street. I'm concerned about the location that you guys are trying to put it on. As a business owner, nobody has contacted me to my feelings on it, or my partners. And I think that's, uh, something that should be done, no matter where you're putting it. None of the people that I know of that live in that area have been notified. That I'm talking about, they were talking about putting it over on, uh, Tishner Street, if I'm not mistaken, that's one 80-foot section over on Tishner Street. We have not been notified, you know, it was just a possibility. Okay, that's what I'm trying to find out. My suggestion is, yes, I know that something has to be done, as far as the courts go, everything. I really think that you guys should, that the council should appoint a committee, those that are for it, and those that are against it, so we can come together and figure out something, because all we're doing right now is bickering, bitching back and forth, and it's not good for anybody, it's not good for the town, it's dividing it badly. So that would be my suggestion. And I would be more than happy to be on the side that is against it.
You're here.
So, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Pat.
Can we ask questions?
What's that?
Can we ask questions?
No, I mean, no, 'cause, I mean, that's the nature of it, it's, 'cause we don't want to, that's how we get into the, be on three minutes every time, yeah.
Take a note, and then you could mention it, your comment.
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to Kyle Grabowski?
I have to agree with Pat Russ. I think there should be a committee, like he said, I think that the current location by Ray's is very suitable at the current moment, until we find a better location as of maybe a building that's not being used by anybody. Maybe building tiny homes, something that would put them out of the eye of the public, but also giving them the best interest for health and for food and showering. I think supplying jobs for them around the city, picking maybe a grocery store or the library, or doing something productive like that, so they can earn money, I think would be the best bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you quickly state your name and address for the record? I should ask you.
Kyle Grabowski, 1780 Jackson Street.
Thank you very much.
It's Kyle.
All right, it looks like, um, Michael and Milton.
Michael Melton Kovalchuk.
That's what I said, thank you.
Oh, nothing's easy in life. My name is Michael Melton Kovalchuk. My husband, Alex, and I live at 52417th Street, right across from the wetlands and right behind Coastal Swag. Um, we currently house four of our homeless population. Um, we're a part of Neighbor to Neighbor. Basically, what we do is we feed people. Um, with the help of common good, with the help of various people in the community who just drop things off to us, and even from the neighbors themselves, our homeless neighbors actually are providing food to help feed the group, which is something that probably people don't expect to hear. Um, we have, we feed probably a dozen people, three meals a day plus snacks, from 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night. We have had as many, just a total roster, we've had about 25 to 27 people come through. Not everybody, not everybody lives around here anymore. Um, right now, having folks next to Ray's is convenient, we have a lot of seniors. There are people out there on disability, there's even more that need to be on it based on their health issues. Right now, there's nowhere for people to go. If it's stormy weather, rainy, their choices are, if the library's open, maybe they can go there, or they go to my porch, or they stay inside a tent, which is often sometimes not very, not very suitable. So I just wanted to say that I am for anything that would help us with taking care of our homeless neighbors, because not everybody asks to be homeless, not everybody's a criminal. We are all people, and we all need to have the same consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Toad Porter.
I don't really know what I want to say, which is a little unusual. I am here really to kind of represent Sue and Dave Gleason, who live in the house adjacent to Ray's Woods. And, um, I believe strongly that we need to help our homeless population, and I applaud the work that Neighbor to Neighbor has done. I'm real concerned that we don't have the services we need to help our homeless people. I'm also very concerned that, um, we have people coming into the homeless settlement next to Ray's and harming the people who are there, and the animals that are there. And I'm concerned that there are some of the animals there that are running loose, harming people. I don't know the solution, it's multifaceted, but I, I think that we really have got to, I applaud you for trying to deal with this, but maybe having a committee to help Neighbor to Neighbor or City Council, we've, we've got to come together on this. I think that's the bottom line, I guess that's all I really want to say, and you all already know. Thank you.
Thanks, Toby.
That's that page, Rowan Stetson. I don't know if I got Toad's address, but she wrote it.
Thank you for letting me speak, my name is Rowan Stetson, my address is 195 Washington Street. I understand that we have a homeless problem that does need to be taken care of. There's safety issues that people don't seem to be addressing, as well as the issues for the upkeep and care of after the fact of giving people a place. In Portland, there's a lawsuit going on, because those people have become tenants, and the city has become the landlords. So I think that there needs to be a situation with a committee or something actually understands what's going on before a place is decided. Also, the place that's being sought after is a wetland, and that is registered as a wetland because of the soil, the vegetation there, and the hydrology of the soil. So these things were all decided on, why there's wetlands all across Tishner. And to put housing there, that means that those places are covered in water for part of the year, so you're going to push forward the ruin of these, uh, houses that you're gonna put up, and basically condemn them from the beginning. So to really think out where things would be put would be prime. And I do agree with the first gentleman that spoke, that the council does probably not have enough information, and neither does Neighbor to Neighbor. So developing a committee to get this under control would probably be the best bet. We don't have the resources available to handle the outcome if this goes the wrong way. We live in the poorest city, in the poorest county in all of Oregon. And that needs to be taken to effect, or taken into consideration. Thank you.
Gosh. Well, we'll get through this, but I got some motions to entertain already. Okay, Brenda Cully.
Brenda Cully, 42575 Port Orford Loop Road. So I've already had to give you my name. Uh, I've lived in Port Orford 35 years, and I'm the treasurer for N2N, Neighbor to Neighbor. Uh, I'm involved with Neighbor to Neighbor because my son was homeless at times when he wasn't able to stay with us. He had schizophrenia and was not able to get adequate mental health care in Curry County. Uh, we still don't have adequate mental health, and he lost his life. Neighbor to Neighbor is a nonprofit organization, and has received a grant to assist the homeless with food and funding for the rental of a porta potty and washing station, which have been there for a couple of months. Uh, other funds are for expenses to provide a warming center for the homeless when the temperature drops in the winter. Local people have also donated funds to help, and we are so thankful for those gifts. The city of Port Orford has not given N2N, Neighbor to Neighbor, any funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Tulley.
Why do you claim to speak?
Tanya Miller.
Hi, I'm Tanya Miller, 41970 Humbug Way, Port Orford. And I am on the board of Neighbor to Neighbor. As far as the location, um, that lot next to Ray's seems to be working pretty well. Other, I do feel bad for the neighbors that live directly behind, and I wish we could find another location that was close to town that was more suitable, but I don't know what that is. And I also wondered about, I think in some cities, they have just, um, prohibited them from being in certain areas, but allowed them to be on public property, not near a school, not near a park, I don't know if that's something worth looking at. Um, so they're not all congregated in the same area. And then I also wanted to point out that seven people from that camp have found housing. The people that are there now are not the same people that were there last year. These are all new people that are here, and they're all local people, local residents of Port Orford. And, um, most of them are women right now. I think we've got four women in the camp, and two gentlemen, and we've got two senior women in the camp. One reason they like to be close to town is because they feel safe here, because being a woman out there alone is scary. And we have a lot of people with mental health issues, as you know. So, I'm open to any location that works, you know, that is suitable for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya.
Al Lowry.
Well, I was gonna relinquish my time, but everything's been said already almost. So, however, I just wanted to thank, uh, the City Council for working to address this problem. It's overdue, and, um, you know, I appreciate the fact that you started out saying, hey, we, you know, we've decided we're gonna find a place, and it's just a matter of where. I would argue that, um, by default, the Ray's area has been the place for as long as I've been here, which is only five years, but still, uh, and, um, where, Neighbor to Neighbor is willing to work with y'all. I had a whole bunch of stuff prepared, and I don't, nobody has time, and you probably heard it all anyway, but, um, I, I just think, obviously, something needs to be done. And I, a committee may be a good idea, on the other hand, you all know how committees are, it's just gonna delay it for another 12 months, so maybe we need to make some hard decisions pretty quickly. Um, we had a proposal we wrote up, that we kiddingly, I kiddingly named the MacArthur Park proposal, I don't know if anybody remembers that song 100 years ago about the cake, the cake melting in the rain. Come up with any other name, but, uh, that was, um, that was a proposal that we could help... But uh, that was, um, that was a proposal that we could help work with that at no expense to the city to manage it where it is by default already, which is an easy, quick fix. I don't quite understand what all the resistance to that is. I mean, it's been there for five years as a tent park anyway. But if you want to find another site, that may be hard, but um, a committee would be a reasonable idea for that. So that's really all I wanted to say today. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Greg Thielen. Mix it up a little bit.
All right. I'm Greg Thielen, 165 23rd Street. Um, I want to talk about the wells. Change the subject a little bit. I was at the meeting last week or two weeks ago, your workshop. And I thought there were a lot of really good ideas that you guys came up with. And I expected that there would be a motion here today uh, to address the, um, the well situation. Um, the, some of the good ideas that I heard that it sounded like the commi, the councilors were into was requiring for new properties that there be, that they have a hookup. And uh, maybe it would be paid in advance, maybe it would be paid on a time, a time payment. But that uh, that new properties or if property was to change hands or a conditional use change that the uh, there would, on, on a property that there was no water hookup, that it would be uh, required. So um, yeah, so it's something the planning commission has wanted. It's something that I've been uh, in favor of. So I'd like to see that happen. I'm surprised there wasn't a motion here, so. Want to say that.
Let's keep it on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda?
It is on the agenda, number three.
All right, Lauren Kessler. Change.
I'll shorten that.
I'm going to wait till, I'll give you, I'll even give you a couple of seconds to get Rowan before I hit the time.
Um, my name is Lauren Kessler. I'm at 1090 12th Street, Port Orford. I am a member of End to End, a proud member of End to End. Um, I'm going to talk about my people. I'm going to talk about the people that we have helped and what it means to help somebody get out. And Tanya doesn't talk enough about the work that she did with Patricia, uh, helping people get out of homelessness. And it is a deep, deep well, once you're in home, uh, once you're a homeless person. Mentally, physically, the whole, but everything is affected. So to help them get out, it's a chore. It's, it's an endless task and it's constant, constant work. I'm so in awe of the people of End to End PO and all the work they have done for those who care for, that we care for and our city. Sometimes it's a thankless job as many in our community don't have the understanding that we all need to care for each other. And I'm proud to be working with these people every day. The countless volunteer hours spent going to meetings, both face to face and online, in the hope of catching the spark of an idea to try out things to make them, make the town better, make the working with people better and working with each other better. Time at the site, signing in new neighbors who want to stay on our little piece of earth, sitting and talking with one of our neighbors on his or her journey as they begin to climb out of homelessness is always enlightening, is always an enlightening time for me as they are raw and unusually open at that time. One of our neighbors showed the struggle to make these first steps, describing it like being in heavy seas in a small boat. The gain sometimes dashed as your boat is pushed back past where you were from the steepness of the waves you're trying to climb by yourself. And when you go over the crest of one of those waves, seems all you can see are steeper waves ahead. Yet the people from end to end keep pushing and pulling and help man the oars. And the effort gets easier and easier as you climb to the crest of the next wave. A smile, a handshake, and some deep relentless work by our outreach person, Tanya, to make contact for them. A hot meal at Michael and Walt's, a place to let down your guard for a few minutes. The encouraging smile from Dr. Lowry when he comes through the site or when we go to Coast Community makes it all worthwhile. Hearing updates from those who have climbed out with your help before us makes us understand it's worth the fight to do this. It gets better and they hear, we hear that it gets better every day, but you still have to keep fighting. Laura keeps us on the straight and narrow while staying here. It may sound funny, but even that consistency makes it better. So we have a mission to keep people from fading away into nothingness of being without a home. We have people in our, our community, in our tent community right now. Right, uh, we, two of them have gone away. We're now down to six tents. As you heard, most of them are local people. In fact, we are way above the na, natural curve in many cities where 48% is usually the average of homeless, homeless people. 48% of them are local. We were at 80%.
You did hit your three minutes.
Okay, all right. And I'll be real quick. These were people who were from Port Orford, who up until recently were voters, were taxpayers and what have you, and due to some, some mental health issues, uh, are out on the street and now living in our community. It doesn't help their ment, it doesn't help their problems that they're living in a tent. Um, we're trying to deal with them. We're working with them. Uh, we're, we're, we're trying to get adapt to help. But there are so many facets, as it seems like everybody's saying to this situation, you really need to work. And I like the idea had of a committee. I know it does take time, but maybe we can set ourselves a timeframe and stick to it and get things done and get a decision, uh, and get the community involved with this, which is what we would like to do. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thanks Lauren. And Kobe not Nance, if I'm reading that correctly.
Thank you for your time. Excuse me. My name is Kobe Nance, 1975 Washington Street. There's a lot of things that, I mean, my wife unfortunately couldn't be here, had quite the speech to say, but I don't think I can do it within the three minute time allotment. As I spoke before, when we had the meeting at the library, a lot of people have never experienced homeless. I've been homeless more than once. I was homeless from when I was 13 up until I was 17. I was homeless in my early twenties. I worked three jobs and ended up homeless. A lot of that has to do with legal stuff, especially when you're going through custody. A lot of people are going through those problems. We need to figure out what exactly each problem a homeless person has gone through and what caused them to be on the street. We watched the two years of COVID tyranny and watching people go out of business. We were one of them. So not only am I a personal victim of that, but I'm also a personal victim of the soft on crime policies, thinks the Senate Bill 46, I think it is, which I call the biggest neener, neener, neener. I can commit all of these crimes and there's nothing you can do about it. That is one of the biggest reasons also with the homeless problem. I remember when we got rid of all the pseudoephedrine and pseudofed, dextrotrate and everything because of the meth issue. I don't remember what Senate bill or what Congress, or what it was that passed the um, sort of the marijuana bill, but they snuck in the, uh, let's decriminalize meth and heroin, everything else. I was a personal victim of that because of my little brother, who's been a homeless heroin junkie on the streets of Portland for over a decade. Every bit of our family has reached out to help him, give him shelter, food, and he has done nothing but lie, eat, steal. And even I suffered assault from it years ago. I have to thank Officer Perry and when Officer Levi were here to help with that. Otherwise, it could have been really bad. And it was over something absolutely stupid because of his schizophrenic paranoia over the years. There was no one to help him. How many mental institutions and places that people could get help got shut down? I think that was even a big thing when Geraldo exposed all the corrupt things that were going on in the mental institutions all over the country. They got closed. People couldn't do human experiments anymore. So instead of making it better, it shut them down. What really needs to happen is the state and federal government need to take responsibility for what they have done. Find all the people who were put out of business during the COVID tyranny and say, what do you need to get your doors open, inventory on the shelves, and your employees who probably ran out of unemployment and are probably on the street being homeless? And have probably turned to the drugs and heroin because life sucks. I'm probably over my three minutes and I will wrap up real shortly. But I've been there before many, many, many times. If it wasn't for some certain very special things, my wife and I would be a part of the homeless group. I feel absolutely fortunate and there's a lot of people who damn well are not. What really needs to happen is our state and federal government need to take responsibility for what they have done, make right what's been wrong, get people back to work, open up businesses that have been closed down, do whatever it takes. It is the government's responsibility to provide prosperity, growth, and if not, at least stability. We have had none of that. It has been an absolute failure on so many fronts. It is ridiculous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
Was there anyone online for public comment? Or Gary, did we see?
There's a person in the back and then there is a person online who submitted this, who I think would like it right into the record.
Okay. And there was another, come on up, Gail.
Gail Wilcox. My home is on Garrison Lake Road and I own business. Uh, 32, 311 Sixth Street in Port Orford. I just have a few questions that I hope the council will address as we all move forward in what appears to be a plan, hopefully a good one. One of my questions is, once a homeless campus or facility, whatever, is formally, um, is formally adopted by the city, I'm wondering if the city has discussed or inquired as to the liability of the city. My second question is, who will be financially responsible? And I understand that Neighbor to Neighbors right now is dealing with trash and porta potty, but presumably water will possibly be required? And who will ultimately be responsible for that? I'm also wondering that if it is established, is this a, um, or will this be a forever responsibility of the city? In other words, will the city be required to forever repot, provide housing for whoever comes to our city for, in need of housing? I'm wondering who will oversee all the aspects of this program because it will need, in my mind, at least one person who is the go to person, whether it's one person on Neighbor to Neighbors or city administrator or law enforcement. But I, I think there needs to be or should be, once it's formally established, someone that is the go to person. And I'm also thinking about the financials of the various companies involved, utility, federal, law enforcement, and how that will be prepared for. Was the question I have that I really think the city needs to address, or hopefully, maybe you have all addressed it, I don't know. But there are multiple issues that would be included if, if or when, in fact, this becomes um, a plan formally adopted by the city, which in my mind then makes it perhaps the city's responsibility in the end. That's all. Thank you so much for your service and your time.
Thank you. Okay, was there, uh, I do have a letter to read into the record, which I'll do really quickly here. And this is from Jen Bailey to the City Council and City Administrator. And it reads, Jen Bailey here, you know me from the Jubilee, but I am writing to you now as the owner of 1416th Street about the possibility of moving the homeless encampment to Tishner Street right away, just north of me. I'm the one who made the wetland map that ended up in the meeting packet attached here. I decided to buy my property in large part, in a large part because it is part of the wetlands just upstream of the wetland interpretive trail. The map indicates that most of Tishner right away is wetland. I am strongly opposed to putting a homeless encampment on wetland. The city's comprehensive plan emphasizes the importance, importance of wetlands, so I expect the city to take this into consideration. Now, that being said, the wetland map data doesn't mean that it's an actual wetland. A wetland delineation is required to formally make that determination. Personally, I trust Ann's opinion, whatever it is, on Tishner's right of way as our resident wetlands expert. That would be Ann Belice, as the council president. Uh, I'm still not happy with a homeless encampment adjacent to a wetland as I expect many occupants will prefer to stay in the more private wetland. Their area should be fenced, in my opinion, expensive, I know. My reading of the municipal code is that a homeless encampment removes public access to the right of way and thus the right of way should be vacated per section 12.28.030. No vacation shall be made of any public way unless the written consent of all owners of property abutting the area to be vacated has been obtained and filed with the city recorder per section 12.28.050. No public way shall be vacated by proceedings initiated by the council if the owners of a majority of the area of the affected properties object to the vacation in writing or if the public would substantially affect the market value of a budding property unless the abutting property owners waive any claim to the damages resulting from the vacation. Thanks, Jen. I think I did another three minutes. Okay, any other public comment online?
The hard part is they're all muted, so I'd have to.
And yeah, they can unmute and they got the little hand. Okay. Not seeing any. We won't wait around any longer on that and we'll move into this uh, end to end and homelessness discussion. I, I mean, there is some facets to this. Uh, one thing we heard quite a few times was, uh, you know, talk of a committee. So just to start the conversation, I, just to start the conversation, I could entertain the motion to form a five person committee to come back to the council with a recommendation by January on the homeless situation.
Would this be a committee that is comprised of public or, or council members or both?
Well, if I, I would think two end to end members, two people that, for lack of a better term, oppose, and then maybe you as the liaison as a counselor. You at. So, but I mean, that's like, I just was entertaining a motion that means absolutely nothing. It is not a motion on the table. So uh, let's, I guess, I'll give everybody their three minutes to talk. We'll go around, Robin, and then we'll go from there on, uh, on how we want to move forward. Uh, so let's get it all on the table. We'll save you for last because you're the, you're the one with all the knowledge. Greg, what do you got for us? Gary? Okay. Uh, I'm going to wait on you too, John. Brett?
I'm not a member. I don't really, I'm, I'm not sure. I wasn't prepared to make a decision to begin with here tonight. I, I thought we were having a discussion about things generally. And then I see a map and it's the same thing that happened last time. And I think we paint ourselves into corners when we try to do things quickly because sure, we are three months later.
Well, and that's why that was the intention of this, starting as a workshop, is because we were kind of languishing. So it's like, let's hammer down the area because we know we need to address and then, and then go from there. Because it has been back and forth and.
Well, I, I think again, the council needs to decide whether, what it wants to do.
And that's the other side.
Want to provide, I mean, are we trying to provide something for someone? Or are we trying to meet the minimum requirements required by law? minimum requirements required by law? And I don't know that we ever did nail that, to be honest, that we kind of dodged around that one. We can make it as complicated as we want. N2N doesn't need us. They don't need us. Period. We need to comply. N2N can do everything fabulous that they want to do without any of this. So I don't even really know what we're trying to do here.
We were nailing down the location was the, was the, what we, that's what we set the workshop up for at the meeting.
Right. I just, I didn't, I asked Ann, is that what you understood? She didn't understand it as that.
I didn't understand. Are you done? You're not done?
No, I just wanted to just kind of, I feel like here we are again doing the same thing, trying to make a decision in a hurry. I feel really bad for the neighbors over there. I feel bad for that lady, she came in here. Toby, for Toby to come in and say anything or to write a letter to us is, you better pay attention to Toby Porter. She's got her finger on the pulse. And, and so I feel bad for those people, but just moving in across the street isn't going to do it. And I just, I just don't think we, I don't think we need to do anything other than not arrest people for sleeping on the street right now in a certain place. That's what, we don't have any money. We don't have any money and I think, I think we're going to find that that's even worse than what we think here pretty soon. So that's it. There's like some, some odd fabrication of hostility between these two groups that, quite frankly, is quite a turnoff because there isn't any. I mean, differing opinions is certainly not a reason to, to, I, the hostility towards the city council, when we, I didn't take this position to help the homeless. I took this position to represent the people in my community, those that voted for me and those that didn't. And while I, I was homeless for five years. I said three at a meeting a while ago and I thought about it, the way it's described now is if you live in a trailer, right, you're homeless. So at least five years that I was homeless from a teenager, I was 15, in Southern California. You got ran out, there was no, there's woods everywhere here. I mean, you could be homeless, so, I could have been so happy homeless here, anywhere. And the idea that we're creating a ghetto in the middle of town really, really bothers me and I don't think that's the way to do it. I just don't think it's the way to do it, but, okay.
Got 18 seconds left.
That's it. I don't know, I didn't even know if I said anything, I was kind of rambling, I, you know, I'm a bit emotional about this too. Because it's hard to do things that hurt sometimes, but sometimes that's what needs to be done.
Ann?
Okay, well, I'm confused about the topic of this workshop. I thought we decided, we made a decision to designate Raze as a place where people could be because by state law, we had to have some place because if we didn't have some place, then people could be camping anywhere and the police would not be able to tell them to move. So we had to designate a place. We did that whenever that was. So I, I think, I mean, I know Counselor Burns, you said maybe we should consider another place because of the conflict at Raze, but I was thinking this meeting was to really think through, we had asked N2N to come up with a proposal, we were trying to solve the problems at that place, which are, you know, human waste, visual blight, you know, what are the problems? Can we solve them? Because we have to have a place. So I personally, I would rather not go backwards, start at square one, because as Brett said, this is literally what happened at the last meeting, there was a map sent out, everybody got all freaked out. We never, as far as I know, we didn't really, as a council, say, let's, you know, that was kind of a comment made at 11 o'clock at night since the last council meeting went till midnight. So I just would, I see, I'd like to hear what Perry, who is our, the person who's been trying to work on this, has to say and build on what we've been. And I would like to see in the future that we have a workshop or the meeting agenda very well defined so people know what we're talking about. There's been so much misinformation or worry because this idea got out and I honestly, I didn't really think that was what this meeting was about, so I'm, I think we need to have better communication.
So I'll get your next Perry, but, and I, it was 11 o'clock, it was late, but as far as my recollection goes, we accepted an ordinance, we accepted the area, like, we're done with that, the city has met its obligation and we're trying to make it work for a large amount of the community that wants to help out. And so we're trying to necessitate that, but the city has done its obligation. And last meeting, at the last minute, we were talking about the situation and the alternate area, and that's what we wanted to talk about. And it was going to be a workshop and then there was also talk of a proposal that was in the works. So we were, we said, let's do a workshop and then we changed it to let's do a meeting so that if that proposal comes about or if we need to make an action, we can do that. It got convoluted and, 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 you know, and then the conversation started on social media and that's a good way for things to, you know, a conversation to start where maybe we know a little more, well, I guess maybe all of us need to be informed more, but that's how I remember it. I remember that we had that conversation and that's why it changed to a meeting. We don't have the proposal, no one seems too amiable to a different location, or it's fine, I haven't heard from Perry yet, but so far, no one's even mentioned a different location and that was the intention of this meeting is how I remember it. So just to throw that out there, I'm sorry that we obviously didn't know or weren't all on the same page, but I will. Tim, you're next and then I'll do Perry last.
Can you hear me, Pat?
Yep.
Basically, I'm not ready to move it to another location. I think there's a lot that needs to be worked out and council needs to decide what that is. And as far as a proposal goes, I have not seen a proposal yet. Has there been one?
Not that we've seen. No, I'm not saying there's not one, Lauren, I'm just saying the council hasn't seen it so we can't even talk about it yet. Gotcha.
Okay. That's the extent of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Do you have anything to say first?
Yeah, I would circle around if you want to go ahead and do yours and then...
So as the liaison to N2N, I think what's happened here is, yes, I requested that we have a workshop to decide if we wanted to move the location because we had a lot of citizen complaints about Raze. So that was the purpose of this. But before I go any further, I want to say one really important thing, that today is National Mental Health Awareness Day and I think it's a good time to have this discussion.
Worldwide.
Worldwide, thank you. Worldwide Mental Health Day. We did vote as a council to allow this right of way to be used for a homeless camp. N2N graciously offered to manage this and they're doing fabulous work. There's a lot of bugs to be worked out and that's what we're doing. But we had to comply with the statute and everybody's not going to like it, but we did it. We did tell them that we support their efforts and we want to continue to support their efforts. We're working on a lease, that takes time. Everything here takes time, as the new person on the council, I can tell you, it takes way too much time. But we are working on a lease with them because once a lease is in place, then they can provide the insurance that we have to have and then we can move forward to help them with a few things like fencing, another porta potty, another dumpster. These are things that we do want to help with. It's just, everything takes time. But we did make a decision to designate the right of way and to support their efforts. I don't think that we're here to decide not to do that or to change our opinion, at least that's my understanding. This was because we wanted to decide if this was the proper location. Myself, I know there is a second location. I don't think that anybody's brought it up, have they?
Tichener?
Yeah, is it Tichener the one you're talking, that you're talking about? Okay. I was thinking it was the other direction. So that, that's really all I have to say. I mean, I, I just, it's a very emotional issue, it's a big issue all over the world. We have, we're really fortunate that we have six people who are homeless and a lot of that is because of the efforts of these people. They've really helped a lot of people move on. I think the idea of a committee is a good idea, however, if people want to be involved, I'd encourage them to volunteer with N2N. I think you can really make a difference that way. I'd also like to encourage N2N to get the word out a little bit better because I think more people would perhaps contribute time and resources to make it work better. I think we all want to solve this problem, we all want to help these people and we all want to work together. And that's all I have to say.
Greg, you still saying?
So I just want to say that I've looked and looked for different possibilities for where this camp could be and the only other one that I found was that Tichener property. So I have just suggested that, nothing has been done other than asking to be, for that site to be looked at and now it just seems like there's plenty of opposition to moving it and I have had no opinion on it. I have, I don't really have an opinion on this right now at all and on Facebook, it was obvious that everybody thought I had an opinion. I just tried to state the facts of where we're at right now and what I, what I personally am looking at, spending so much time with this, I see that if we do the ordinance as we agreed to roust everybody at 8:00 AM and make them move on, I see that as being a big job and I don't know that anybody has really faced the reality of what kind of work that's going to be for Public Works and for our police department. I personally know some of these people and there's mental health issues and it is going to be one heck of a job to do that every morning. And more than likely, they won't come back and they'll end up somewhere else in town where they don't have to get up and be packed out and, and so I don't know, where, where is the best place? These people cannot be bused somewhere. There's all kinds of ideas that come up, but there are legal rights and as a city, we open ourselves up to liability if we do something wrong. When these people ends up suing us, we do not need a lawsuit. So we've got to stay within the confines of the law and it... So, so that's basically it, you know, I like the idea of the committee, I like the idea of the community coming together. I see some rough times for every town in the country and all over the world and communities that can pull themselves together and work through the problems are the ones that are going to succeed and the ones that fight each other are going, it's going to be a mess. And I live here in this community because I consider this a community as the definition of a community. That's why I live here. I love this community, I love the people that live in it, I love that there's adversity and there's many opinions, that's to be expected with this number of people. And so I'm only hoping for the best for the town in any decision I make. I'm not for one thing or another and these homeless people, they don't actually affect me. So all I'm after is a solution that helps everybody and I'm always open to any suggestions and I'm open to changing my mind. I'm not stuck on anything and my door is always open and many people come to the gallery and chat with me or email or whatever and I'm always open for that, for ideas, and I think most of the council is. So I thank you all for being here and I'm hoping we can work through this.
We haven't ever talked about the lots the city has out on Paradise Point. How come that, I mean, in the research, how come that wasn't an option?
Never saw it.
Well, there's two lots, there's a former...
We own?
Yeah, there was a former employee that just mentioned to me the other day, why don't you guys ever talk about the two lots out on Paradise Point? So, I mean...
You see them? This one?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, it's, well, yeah, and I'm trying to find where our, I was told we had two lots out there, so I just, we need to follow up with Dane.
Oh, see.
There's one right there by the bridge.
There's one by the bridge and then if you go up past Kier Circle, there's those two on the left and one on the right too, so...
I think that one by the bridge is probably kind of into the...
Yeah, it's nothing, yeah, it's like...
It's not suitable, yeah. I think this one's interesting.
I just had to throw it out there while we, okay, so I am not really hearing anything about wanting to move location or there being merit of location. So are we going to talk about having a committee? Because I just landed on, you know, N2N is a committee. So if they have, you know, if they invite, find two people that are opposed to this, then why can't that be a tool to refine that proposal, you know? Like, maybe we're, need to step away. The city's done what the city is required to do and I don't think any of us are not compassionate to this or want to help out, but we're the city, so we have to be careful, you know, liability, all that good stuff, so hopefully we can circle back. The main objective to this was to circle back, hammer down the location, in my opinion, and move forward with N2N and...
Mr. Mayor, I still would ask, what is, you know, when we talk about nailing a property down, a location, what is our goal? What is our goal? Is our goal to... It here? Is it for the ease of a certain group or is it for the protection of a different group? Is it for the protection of a owner of a property, a homeowner who's retired and can't move? Yes. There's people who cannot move.
Yes, to all of that.
They don't get a choice in here, they don't, like, we could move the camp all around, but that lady that's retired, the average Port Orford citizen is a 67-year-old woman and she can't move. She's stuck and whatever we do, we're doing to her. And so we've got to keep that in mind and be sensitive to that. So are we trying to create a comfortable place for a certain group? Are we trying to meet minimum requirements? Are we trying to meet requirements but deter, just, we could, there's things that we could do to deter folks from wanting to come here? Or, I don't, personally, I have a really hard time, I don't know and I'm not trying to say anyone's being dishonest, but I see faces that I've never seen before in that camp and I've been here for 35 years. So, you know, maybe, maybe they've been around for a few and maybe somebody else has been around for a few and it seems like they've been here forever, but I do not see familiar faces. I went there last night. I went there last night and did a little recon mission and for what it is, it's not terrible, but if I was that lady that lived 10 feet away, that retired and spent every single penny on my retirement home next to this beautiful little wetland interpretive center, I would be pissed. I don't know, I think there's better places, we've got to find it, but we need to determine what we're trying to do. Again, what are we want?
That's the million dollar question. We did... We did what we were required to do and then we started doing extra as soon as we started having the conversation. We haven't finished that conversation.
We're not enforcing our ordinance.
No, and that's the problem.
We are, that, we could be,
Right.
We're liable.
But we decided as the council, which be it as it correct or not, that we were going to work with N2N.
You cannot make an ordinance and then say, yeah, but,
Right. Well, and that's where the,
The rule of law right now is what that ordinance says in black and white. We are not adhering to it. Can we adhere to it? Is it constitutional? I don't know. I don't know any of that stuff. But what I know is, is that we are not adhering to it. Maybe that place that's at right now is perfect if it was adhered to. If the, if the conditions were adhered to. You know? It's, it's,
Well, we're not, we're not, people are not being roused at, or maybe roused at, I mean, it's,
We're required by law to provide a place for people to rest. Right.
And no tarps and no, you know, there's,
We have, we have, we have failed. This council has failed.
Well, I, I think we're trying to, I, I think what we're trying to do is we had to provide the space, so we did that. That was like the bare minimum. And then we realized there's problems there. And so we're trying to solve the problems. And I think it's like a really fine line between, okay, human waste. Where are people going to go to the bathroom? Are they going to go into Raze? Are they going to like, I mean, to, to say at least that we have made some progress. Last year, I went on a tour. Andrew took me over there. There are buckets of human excrement. I mean, it was really gross and it's a public health and safety hazard near our wetlands. This year, we don't have that because N2N figured out how to get an, an outhouse, a John Job, Johnny, what do you call those guys? Johnny on the spot or whatever. outhouse. They got one of those things. And so, you know, that's like the fine line. By providing an out, like a Job Johnny, are you making their lives comfortable? Or are we like trying to help our community not have a public health hazard? Because those people are going to be pooping in the woods or on the street or whatever. So to me, it's like, we're trying to find that, I think we're trying to find that line of doing what the city has capacity to do, which is minimal. But we gotta do this, follow that law.
If we follow through. The thing is, is that we made, we, we, we placed conditions. We placed conditions on our ordinance that are very clear. And I don't think we're adhering to very much of it at all.
Except for the location. We're bantering back and forth here. I got to get us back on track. Perry, you did have your hand raised.
I think it's important to remember that this is a temporary thing, that N2N is working towards raising money, getting a grant, whatever they can to get a space. They're working with Adapt to try and get into their space. This is not intended to be a permanent camp. This is intended to be something that gets us, gets people off of the street and complies with the ordinance until, or with the, excuse me, with the, um, with the law, until such time as they can find a more permanent solution to the problem and one that's more manageable.
So, but if you make that private, the city still has to provide something and we still have to, that, that people might not, the city still has to provide a location. If the people don't want to adhere to the N2N policies, we still have to provide a location. So it's, you know what I mean? It can't just be all or nothing. You see what I'm saying? Most people don't, some people don't want to appear to N2N, so they don't want to. We still have, the city have to give them a piece of property, according to the law.
Well, and, but that's what we're doing is we're, and if somebody doesn't want to stay in the N2N camp, then we can tell them to leave because we, that is a place they can go.
But that, I think, is the rub, right? That's the rub of like, what's the difference between the N2N policy and the city policy? And that, I think, is what I was hoping that N2N and, that was something I was hoping was being worked out. So that, you know, between law enforcement and, and to end and, and other community partners like Coast Community.
I, I think Greg's concern is that if N2N was to take over or get funding and have their own area, the city would still be obligated to have an area by law. So it wouldn't, you know, we would still have that and it would still help. And that would still give us, you know, more options.
There'd be fewer people at the camp.
Was there? I don't know that he can count on that.
Thanks. And I, I had some conversations with Lauren and Tanya earlier and they were contemplating kind of a two-tiered approach. And the location would still be the same location. N2N would not propose to occupy the entire section of right of way. So there would be the N2N area and then the city ordinance area, all on the same right of way. N2N would just lease a portion of it. And then we would enforce. And the idea would be you can go to N2N or you can pick up your stuff and, and go every day kind of thing. So, um, I mean, I'm paraphrasing and I'm, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but we had, we had had some conversations like that. So, um, again, that's, that would be the idea there. Anyhow, that's, so that would, I think it would, we would be able to satisfy our legal requirement and do the N2N all in the same area. Um, Tanya, I don't know if you're gonna,
Okay.
Open it back up.
Sorry, it's hard when we have so many people.
Could have somebody else.
Most of the people that are in the camp right now are people that are wanting to transition into housing. They're working towards that. They're working towards getting disability. They're stuck right now, but they're wanting to get into housing. We only have like one or two people that are like passing through or temporary that don't really want help. And most of the people that don't want help are not in the city. They're out of towns. We've offered them help. We've tried to help them, but they, they move out, you know, Elk River or somewhere out of the area if they don't want help.
Yeah, and seriously, we had the Elk River guys coming down that were found in the woods by the firemen and kicked out. That's why you saw them roaming through town the last couple of weeks. They tried to stay in the tent camp. Laura, myself and Tanya, here are the rules. I'm not following any rules. Keep moving. You can't stay here. Okay, so.
And it's okay that we're doing that? Or we have any sort of proposal? I mean, to have someone, like, to have people dictating things on the city property? Like, isn't that terrifying? And the liability that we've been trying to avoid the whole time?
As far as I'm concerned, that's not us doing that.
Okay, no, I'm,
I mean, that would be like me asking you to leave somewhere. Like me saying, hey, you need to, you need to go out of here.
But they don't know that. They don't know that. And, and, and it seems like we're condoning that and then we're allowing,
But the idea of having the two camps where one part of it, they have to leave every morning. To me, the fewer people that have to be roused each morning, the better to the city.
It just depends on what it is that you're trying to accomplish, I think.
Well, I'm saying the minimum resource for the city.
Well,
The minimum effort.
Right.
That's the bottom line to me.
That was what,
So whatever way, that's the only thing I want is to figure that out.
And the city, that's, I think the city's not in a position to do much more. But we need to be sure that we cross our Ts and our Is because we don't have a contract with N2N.
But they're working on it.
But we don't. And they are removing people from public property.
Time out, guys. This is, this is a business meeting. This is not a banter back and forth. I'm not trying to be rude.
If you're telling someone to leave public property and you're not authorized to do that and we're, and we are condoning it or, you know, I, I just, it, it's trickier than I think a lot of people might be thinking, why, why do you got to get so, you know, weird about it? Because people sue the crap out of people. And they sue the crap out of cities big time. And so we really need to be careful that, that we're, I mean, individuals. Like, I'm protected for a million dollars sitting here right now. You are not. And, and so one of these people that, well, okay, good. I'm glad that you are.
Well, we did have Shayla here last time. We don't have her here tonight, which makes it hard. But, um, it, it did seem like we have, we do have some details about liability. And that was the thing about whose insurance, does our insurance cover it or does theirs? Or those are these things we're work, that I think we're working on. That's what I thought too.
So time out. I believe that how this went down is we made the ordinance. The council accepted the ordinance. Then N2N came and said, we would like to do this. And the council said, okay, we can do that. And then N2N was going to come back with a proposal. I don't care why it's not here yet. It's in Lauren's hands right now. So we should probably forget about, like, we've gained information the last couple of months, but we're obviously up against a rock and hard place right now. So we should probably start by reviewing that proposal so that we can actually talk about something other than this back and forth like we've been doing for the last hour. So I'm super happy that there's a proposal. I think it looks like we can get that proposal by next week's meeting to where we can at least, you know, peruse it and maybe make some, you know, forward progress. I don't see us making a whole lot of forward progress right now. Like, like we, we started off on the wrong foot, not having it nailed down. And because of the nature of the agenda and the citizens' concerns, I wanted to just bullet point it out right off the bat, but it couldn't happen and didn't happen. So we're going to have a proposal. We're going to have a starting point and we can start talking about it. I think everyone here is compassionate, but I think everyone here is also a city council person. So we have to watch out for the city first. That's our job. We're very fortunate to have a community that has such a large amount of people that want to help. It's awesome. But we just have to be careful because we have a whole community to, to work out. And just because we're trying to listen to everyone doesn't mean that we're not being compassionate. So is there anything else that, that a counselor needs to talk about on this subject?
Yeah, can we get that tonight?
Yeah, he's got it. I mean,
Sooner the better with that.
Yeah, we can get the proposal. We're not going to talk about it though with like,
Do we want to, uh, do we want to vote on a, on location or do we want to wait till?
We've already voted on a location. Unless there is a motion to change the location, then we do not need to. I see a couple of hands raised. I let Tanya speak because she is so involved with N2N. I'm not trying to deter anyone. I'm sorry, we've already had public comment and I'm really getting the heat to push through these meetings. So we're going to go ahead and move on. Thank you all for your participation. It's obviously a continuing conversation, but I, I think we can get to it. And if anything, N2N, please, like it's been asked before, try to get the, the notice out there and get some people that are super opposed. Go find the, the maddest people you can find walking out of here. See if they want to come to a meeting. Thank you all very much for what you're doing.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
How are we supposed to hurry up if we're taking breaks? All right. All right, hey, guys, we're going to be talking about the brick grant and wells later on. I don't know. They're all leaving. Oh, good gosh. Thank you for saying that. Oh my God, yes. Yeah.
I know, I, I guess I'm too young. I'm too young to know what that is.
No, I'm, I'm just going to, it's like Christmas or I'll look at it in the morning. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, but there is. No, they're going to go to the park. Yeah. But we don't,
I guess I'm trying to look further down the road. That's not the text that I need.
And they are hoping to get the gaps. And, and working with them. It was really interesting because I told you guys at the last meeting that they discovered 45 workers that are in working.
Well, here's, here's what the Eighth Amendment says.
So they're really working hard.
Excessive bail shall not be required nor excessive fines imposed. For cruel and unlawful punishment, they pay their money right out of the hospital.
Which is crazy. But we're like, yeah, we'll pay.
Maybe correct. So that is an interpretation of the Eighth Amendment.
That's still really powerful stuff.
Yeah.
It's, it's taxation without representation?
No. Whatever you're saying.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We want a letter to go. They're terrible. It's, it's money. The service they provide, it's, uh, they're not professional. Low rate.
Very interesting. I thought it was great. What, uh, what's your background? Are you, uh, out of school? What's, you know?
You get $200 pay?
Oh, I wouldn't have known if you hadn't told me.
Well, and it's just, and you know that,
Excellent.
Oh, yeah, the, the point is right. Like, the presentation's not good, but I see.
Yeah. Well, here's, I, I have some ideas that I'll talk to the mayor about. I don't, they say we have properties on Paradise Point. Our properties are outlined in red on this map, but I don't, so all the red outlines are the city-owned properties. I just didn't see them. Wondering. Yeah. Brick grant and wells and water? Thanks for your help on this.
Not at Arlen Rice, the whole problem is, is I, like, you are the general consensus of we want to help. You don't want to hear, you don't want it on our house. And that, there is my, is the problem. Well, and it's Fort Orford, it's not that far. Like, if you lived in the city, you would walk twice as far to get somewhere.
You're gonna be mayor for the day. No, I was, I was giving. I don't give this fat boy away. I earned this thing. All right, everybody. Let's try to make it back. Where'd Greg go?
Oh, he probably heard that. Who's Gary? Gary Sayer. Oh, he'll see. He'll get it. Tim's still here. We still got to call him, but yeah. You want me to go get him? I'll be sergeant.
I'll tell you what, I just. Almost want to hear you say that again because that's such a reversal of what's the current of the past from here as well. I mean, if I can.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. Did you really think this stuff was gonna be easy? Did you really think this was gonna be easy? It'll be the funnest one, though.
Well, I did not get my break.
Okay, so we're gonna stop this recess at six fifty-nine. Let's get going on here. Okay, so council direction on the brick grant. What do you got for us, John?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Council. Um, if you recall, we got the grade on our brick grant application and we, uh, were not awarded the brick grant application and we received communication from the state OEM and FEMA uh, on feedback on our, on our application. Sorry, Greg. Anyhow, um, and at the last meeting, the council said, we'll give you another hour to use our engineer and, uh, and talk to, um, the OEM people. And so we did that. And the OEM, uh, person and, um, I think one of our city council members here predicted this, but he encouraged us to, um, refine our application and, uh, and keep our hat in the ring. And, uh, he said that, uh, the benefit of that is that we are, if it's a revised application, the date of our application goes to our original, uh, application time. He also, I think, Ann, said that FEMA had suspended funding the brick grants at this round because, um, of other financial obligations and disasters they were handling. But really, um, I think I'd let, Ann was in the room and, um, I think the council has a decision to make and I think I'd like Ann to speak to the council's decision, uh, on this issue.
Yeah, I'll just add that, um, you know, I was kind of skeptical of putting more money down the hole of this thing. Um, but we went to the meeting. We had a very positive meeting. I mean, it really was the guy kind of suggested that this is how it works. We do, do a grant and come back and improve it and do it again. They offered to give us a more in-depth, uh, like a very in-depth meeting to help us understand the problems with our proposal. Uh, one of the problems that we read through the lines was that we probably went too big. And so, uh, the concept that, uh, the, that Marlin, the engineer, suggested along with the FEMA guy is we need to kind of focus it. And, uh, I like that idea. I'd be willing to, it's gonna take a lot of work is the thing. And I'd be willing to put some shoulder into that. If we have that meeting, um, we would be going very carefully through the grant and then, uh, John Isador and John, yeah. So anyway, that's, I thought it was very positive and it made me excited to try again.
If I could add another detail and Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, one of the things in our grading was that, uh, they said you didn't explain things and it seemed like, um, the engineer from Civil West had that information at his fingertips so that these fixes would not be very difficult. In other words, they said you didn't, you didn't explain, you know, like, I think they said we didn't even show the economics of it or something. We had those numbers and I, I, I don't know if it was a, a shortcoming on the application. You, you was, am I correct there, Ann?
Yeah, there, there was.
It seemed like some of the things they're asking us for to improve our score were very easy, low hanging fruit.
Some things could be low hanging fruit. Yeah. So anyway, it just seemed as though it would be worth going back, having that in-depth meeting with them, learning.
Evaluating.
Yeah. And, and so that would be a next step. We could have that meeting and then decide how, you know, how much time it would take for us to improve the application.
And here's what I'd be willing to do before the next council meeting would be to get Marlin and, and, and ask him, you know, how much time do you need? And then I could give a specific ask to the city council at the next meeting. Can we have this much more time to go down the brick grant path? And then you could say up or down on that.
And one of the, the process, basically, the next step that we discussed would be that we, meaning the people who are on that call, Marlin, John, John and I, would really look at the application critique, look at those grades and really carefully come up with a question so we could go into the meeting with those brick people really well informed, ready to go. So we'd really make the best use of that meeting and then we'd come out of it. So anyway.
Right. So if you've heard of technical assistance, it sounded like that we would have a FEMA person on the phone giving us technical assistance on our grant application.
Yes.
So.
Which is huge. And that, yeah, that's, that's good. And you build that rapport. But correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like we're going to pay the engineer that we paid to do, uh, not, I mean, that worked with us to, that had the information at their fingertips that wasn't on the application that we paid already. We're gonna pay them again to refine it when they're the ones that told us we should go big in the first place? And now they're saying we should refine it? Like, it just.
But they didn't have complete control of making the, uh, grant, writing the grant.
What's that?
We need to, you want a successful grant, you hire a grant writer.
I, I'm talking, we had, I'm just saying, we paid a pretty penny for those engineers to help us do the original brick.
That's right.
Like, and so, and now, and they were told us that we should go big, that you go big when you can. And I don't, I wanna, I mean, I didn't necessarily agree with that, but they said go big. And now the same people are saying, yeah, you should refine it.
Well, I think what FEMA kind of suggested that. And so I think the engineer realized at that point. And yes, I very much wanted to say, I told you so. But, um, anyway, I, I think that we, we have a good path forward. I guess is what I'm saying coming out of that meeting. I, you know, I went in sort of skeptical. I came out thinking, yeah, we're, this is gonna be a great, this is a great opportunity. Who knows if we'll do it, but it seems worth putting in some more time. That's what's my, my take.
But do we need to start with John and staff coming to us with these are the refined things? And then give that to the engineer to bring those numbers? Or are we gonna have the engineer help us come up with that again? Because that's something that helped it get bigger.
I think, I, my take is that the engineer understands that we need to be, kind of have a different approach this time and that some of that information is the kind of information an engineer just has to give us. So, you know, there's certain things that different ones of us can do and there's some stuff that just has to be, you know, coming from that.
But we just paid them to update all that for the original, for the, for the main brick grant. So can't we just cut some out and we have the pertinent information for the, for the smaller proposal?
Basically, I think that is true, Pat. I think that's, that's what we're talking about.
And I'm not trying to be negative to you guys. I just get engineers on my brain and it starts spinning.
I know. I, I'm skeptical. I'm worried about that too. But I think it's more like they have the information. He has it. And that if we're gonna kind of want, you know, make it a little bit more focused, that he has to be in that conversation.
We own it then. We own that information. We need to get it from him.
Right. I have a big question about that for Brett Webb because you talk about a grant writer. So even if we get a grant writer and I'm assuming, do they get paid out of the grant or do we pay?
Well, you can write, you can write it in, oftentimes it is written into the grant.
Okay. And would that grant writer also need information from the engineer?
And that's why I say we own that. We own that information. If we paid him to, to generate it, we own it.
All right.
And, and if it's not on file here, it should be.
Very good.
I, I believe.
Well, and how, what do you, how much do you have to refine something you just did four or five months, you know, five or six months?
But my point, I think, is that maybe the grant didn't get written right. And, and, and maybe the grant writer that we had at the time, um, a former employee didn't ask for that and didn't put it down in the grant.
But they also had the engineer and the head of emergency, the emergency for the county too.
And CCD. Didn't CCD help? No, not with that.
So the, the.
But that's a.
You have to hire a grant writer.
Looking at, when really we just need, like, what we have on the table is how we want to move forward with this.
Well.
I would, I would propose that we give, that you give us, uh, the go-ahead to have that next meeting. And I think, I would, I think, John, what you're right, what you said is right. Ask Marlin how much it would cost for him to participate in that next meeting.
Right. And then I'd come back to council and say, do you want to do this or not? So that, that, I, it was really just an update from the hour that we had authorized to do. And, um, coming back to you, so I'm not looking, I guess it is direction. Is it council direction?
Consensus, maybe.
Yeah, consensus. You want me to bring back, uh, for the nineteenth? And okay, I got a thumbs up, a nod.
For what?
Good. To see, so next, our next proposal is a meeting with FEMA, TAC assistance, so technical advisory.
Just that, just for the meeting. Okay.
But aren't you asking us how much, because to do that meeting, we had to do some preparation, which might be, you know, different ones, us sitting down for a couple of hours.
I will ask Marlin how much work he's gonna cost us to do the TAC meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we might be able to do a lot of it ourselves, but the kind of tech stuff, I mean, it's just sort of like costs per, you know, I mean, it's.
There's a lot of metrics that were not included in the, I mean, I think if you remember, you, you saw, they said we didn't explain our, like, our cost benefit ratio or some, some really basic.
That's exactly what a grant writer is gonna do. And, and all that grant writer needs is the data. It doesn't matter if you're trying to build a water system or a, a freeway or a bridge or a swimming pool. A, a grant writer is gonna know, it, it's about telling a story.
They're not so easy to find, but.
But actually.
They're not and they're, but we have, we had a great grant writer in here today.
With all due respect, I've written a lot of grants and I'm not a grant writer and I've gotten a lot of grants.
Have you?
It's about being a good storyteller.
Yeah, tell a story.
And it's about having the information at your hand to put it in the right spot. And I think that, um, I think that between Ann and John and, um, and the engineer, I think that we can at least make a start of that. And the bulk of this grant has been written. So, you know, it's just gonna be tweaking it.
To rewrite.
Yeah.
And we have more people in our rolodex now. The governor's on this. Representative Hoyle. Like, we have a lot that we didn't have the support before, but we are teed up to get some really good letters of support. And so, what, like, but the question is, what do we want to refine it down to? And I guess that's where the meeting comes in is, and, but where does that start? Doesn't that start with the staff?
I think it starts with, we look at, I think it starts with the, with what we, what the grades were. And part of it is, you know, we look at the grade, what were the parts that made sense? What were the parts that didn't make sense? To me, you know, there's this thing about cost benefit analysis and feasibility. Could we get it? Could we do it in three years and stuff like that? I think we have to have a more clear-eyed look than we did the last time. I mean, I think the last time it was a little bit more pie in the sky. I think we need to have a real clear-eyed look of what's possible. And, um, yeah, I think that the story they came away with, you know, some of the things we heard was, oh, this looks like deferred maintenance. And I know, we know, the former, um, staff person who worked on it really tried to not make it look like that, but somehow we didn't succeed. So, you know, we gotta, and somehow, you know, the, how this is gonna affect our community and make our community more resilient, some of those things didn't come through well enough. So I think, you know.
You come in, you, you, you gauge the, the, the group that's, that you're trying to impress and, and their goals and objectives and you play to them. You know, if, if it's, um, you can tell the story about how we've made sacrifices in order to protect our environment because of our pristine location and the ecology and, and this and that and yada, yada, you do that. And, and because of that, it's cost us some money and we, and now we're unable to invest in our own infrastructure, but we've protected this and that. And you just, you, you show how you've invested in other ways.
And we have a perfect opportunity to do that with our impound because we know it's an emergency situation, which is what this funding is for. And we also know that we just spent half a million dollars trying to upgrade that. So those are two of the selling points. And it seems like if we refine it down to like one.
Build off one, one another too. And, and you, you, we look at the port, we say, you guys just invested six million dollars in a breakwater. You just invested three million dollars in cranes. They need water down there. You, you build off, you, 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 I'm not, I'm not a grant writer either.
No, it's all in the.
But it's just what I, what I've learned over the years.
If you give us the opportunity to talk to the technical assistants, I think we would know more.
Okay, how many hours? You need two or three?
I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So consensus to have John move forward on that. Thank you.
Basically just another baby step or another step.
You got halfway around with consensus before I interrupted you in the head of this.
Okay.
So, okay.
It was a really exciting meeting. I think we left feeling jazzed in a way that I kind of thought I was gonna go in and feel like, came out feeling positive. So that was good.
I went to a one-stop in Salem one time when we were trying, uh, actually ten years ago or twelve years ago when we first started trying to finance the building at the port. And, uh, it was a one-stop meeting where all the funders are there and you, and man, I thought that we were just gonna end up with riding home with a truck full of money, you know? And, uh, I think it's been fifteen years now. We haven't gone nickel. So.
Yeah, no.
You say, be, be.
Be realistic. I know, I know.
Be patient.
Well.
They say one stop, you think you're leaving with a bag of money.
That's what I thought. I mean, I drove clear up there.
Okay, so let's see. Five. Council direction on wells and water. My recollection of that last meeting is that there was a proposal that was brought to us and we talked to about it for about an hour and we came to a consensus on these little changes and it's gonna come back to us at the next meeting. Am I wrong?
Yeah, so I have, I have a motion to make.
Oh, that's fine too.
So I, I make a motion that we direct staff to bring us an updated resolution based on Resolution twenty twenty-three oh five regarding the water curtailment policy that was presented to us back at council in May of twenty twenty-three. Um, that instead of the number two provision, provides an alternative, uh, which is to require the SDC fees to be paid upfront. And then to also explore the option of including a provision to require hookup to the city water within a specified period of time, uh, after the city can provide services or at the time when the property changes hands. So, yeah, second. Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, so we have a first and a second on that short motion.
Yeah, so I.
I actually, I put, I didn't, I, I, I did it because we had a really technical discussion at the workshop.
No, and those were the two.
I watched, I watched, I watched the video.
So, oh, good.
I would miss the workshop, but I watched, I caught that. But I read everything about it. I understand where we're at.
So I, I did print one out so that you can see that I'm referencing the, the previous thing, if you want to see it.
Does anybody want to see that?
I passed it out.
Or I mean, you got, okay.
I think the discussion would happen if we get this and then we move, then we have a discussion.
Or act, we have all the information and then we have something to decide.
I guess it's pretty standard for me to ask if anybody wants to say anything else.
I think you just have to, don't we, are, are you just gonna direct staff to? Is that what you're doing? So we don't need, we could just direct staff to?
I think that's the, the process, right? I'm kind of trying to establish the process here where we had it go to the planning commission. We're, we're kind of working through, we had a workshop. I'm bringing back the motion to direct staff. And then we get it to come to council, right? So that's what I'm trying to do.
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay.
Can I, can I have a comment, Pat?
Yeah, absolutely, Tim.
Uh, so last time we discussed, also included, um, grandfathering in the existing wells, if I was correct?
Yeah, absolutely, Tim. That, the, the, the resolution that we have here is only for new, um, uh, building during the time of curtailment. But we, we could add that, if you, we could add that into the motion to make that utterly clear.
I, I would like to make it, that would be great if we could make that clear. Or it could come back next week at the, at the, uh, next meeting in that way.
Well, I, I made the motion, we could just either, I could add that to the motion or we could, um.
Can we just add that?
Can we just add it?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I would be...
Okay, I amend it by adding that.
Be careful with what you, I mean, uh, so it's gonna be grandfather in...
Existing.
Existing, but, uh, this only applies to wells.
Moving forward.
Moving forward or during curtailment or...
It was supposed to be during curtailment and moving forward, I think. I mean, this resolution was during curtailment. Because right now, we have the time, uh, where we're, we can't allow building, so it's during this period. But yeah, maybe we, that's a very good, good point. So I think we, that's a good, good specific question. Does it apply from here moving forward?
That's what I would ask when it came to me next week. And red shows and the spokes, yeah.
So, yeah, could that be worked, John, could that be part of whatever we...
Come on, send me your stuff and I'll put it into, I'll smith it up.
Thank you so much. So do we have to vote on that motion then? Or, okay.
Yeah, might as well, there's a motion in a second.
All right, no more discussion, Greg?
Yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Gary?
Harry, yes.
Ann?
Ann, yes.
And Brett?
Brett, yes.
Tim?
And Tim?
Tim?
Tim, yes.
Okay. And moving on, you moved the agenda, but that was the last...
Says adjourn.
No, there's one more thing here you have on here. You showed this press release thing, do you want to have that?
I, I, that's just at your places. That's a press release on the, uh, on the, uh, short-term rental ordinance, trying to educate people that it's coming. And, uh, this, this at your table is different than what I sent you. I only, I moved, I added the part of the, of the good neighbor policy, because when I read, when I read the draft, it was all negative, like, if you don't have this, you can't do business, you're gonna get fined. And I, and so I wanted to say the good parts about the ordinance that we're include, we're, we're doing the neighbor to neighbor. So I, that's what the draft at your, at your places are, and then I'll give that to the paper so they can, we can start the education, and then...
Great, and one, one other thing, I'd, I'd love to see if we could add to this. I know you have to be concise, is, um, is just emphasize that the reason we're doing this is to try to address housing. Um, that the reason, this, that's like one of the key reasons we did this is so that instead of just having vacation rentals take over our whole community, um, because I think that's a real important positive, that is a real important motivation for why we did that, that's also a plus.
Good.
Yeah, good point.
It was deep.
Yeah, I mean, that was the bottom line, that's why we did it, and so...
All right, thank you very much.
All that work.
Yeah. Okay, so our regular meeting is gonna be next Thursday. Uh, what do we have? We've added, uh, we've added to the agenda, the...
Brick grant.
The brick grant discussion. As far as authorizing the meeting, we had the, uh, well, resolution, and we also have the proposal from N to N.
And I had put on, I had requested, um, considering the intergovernmental agreement with the Soil and Water Conservation District for, uh, moving forward with, uh, fire risk reduction in our community.
And I think we already have that. Okay, well, that's what we added today. Uh, any other counselor considerations?
Big surprise. So this whole thing just makes me want to reiterate what I said a couple times ago. I think one of our biggest problems in this community is no good way to communicate. And I think that all these people come, you know, all upset about this thing because they don't know what we've done, and they don't know what's going on, and I'm not sure how to fix that. I mean, I'd love to just resurrect Valerie Kramer.
Yes.
But that's not gonna do it.
You gotta control your message. If you don't control your message, someone else will.
Well, exactly, but we're not, we're not finding a way to control that message. I mean, we, we don't, so I have to say, um, you know, there are two sites on Facebook that are full of comments, and people have been, you know, just, just crowding the waves with it. But there's nobody from the city that is contributing and that is saying, well, here's what we've done. And I think we have to, I think...
That's what I've been trying to do on...
Yeah, but you can't, you can't.
You gotta watch that.
You have to be so careful.
We can't interact with, like, if, if it's one of us interacting with them, we're just another citizen on Facebook. Like, it has to be a council...
Right, but can we put something, we, we need to do something so that people are really aware that, you know, maybe we should say on Facebook, please go to the Port Oxford City website where you will find, you know, something like that, I don't know, but...
Watch the video. John could type something out and, and put it onto, uh, our website or...
Does it go on our website already?
Does the city have a Facebook page?
No.
The police department does.
Not anymore.
Do they?
And I guess that's what I'm saying.
It's probably smart, but it doesn't have to be interactive.
No, and that's my point. We just have to have some way that we know that people can get information about what decisions we've made and what we're actually doing, because, you know, everybody thinks things are happening that aren't, or thinks that things aren't happening that are.
So that's the whole thing.
I hate to say this snarkly, but we have a website and we have a meeting every month for this reason, and we, we, we...
I know.
You know...
Need to lead the horse to water.
I think part of the...
I, I sympathize completely, and you're absolutely right. But the reality of, of that on the ground is that we end up, you know, in these big messes.
It's, that's just the way it goes. I mean, I, I hate to say it, but that's just the way it is.
I just don't buy that.
I just remember, I, so I've been at this for quite some time, like, 20 years. And you'll have a meeting, like, at the port or something. You'll have a meeting about, um, you know, uh, putting a new crane in, and, and there'll be people who showed up just mad as hell because they want more link out on their sport fishing quota, and they're pounding their fist on that table over there. And there's going to be those who do not understand.
I'm just not convinced that we can't do better.
Well, that's true. I absolutely agree, but I could always just count on...
Oh, yeah, there's always gonna be...
That's why we're here, right? It's because we make those decisions.
John, John is, I think, doing a good job with this idea of doing some press releases. I mean, he's starting to do that, so that's an awesome thing. We haven't done that for quite some time, so that's a good, that's a little...
That is great, does it go on our website as well?
Does it?
Does it go in the paper, is that what we're doing?
Here I am saying, you need to look at the website.
That's expensive, huh?
And then there, you know, there could possibly be in the future, like, for example, maybe a blog post, like, by you about something. I think our, our website has the potential to do more than we're using it for. Right now, liaison reports, we're supposed to be writing them down. I'm doing it, nobody else is, but that actually becomes a written record, good, of everything, you know, that I'm doing in this area. So those are ways people could find it, but anyway...
If they're on the website.
If they're on the website, yeah.
And so that's, I guess, the first question is, do, do these, these things get posted on our website?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there, can we do something, pardon? A couple times, but I'm having trouble getting on it. Um, something's wrong with, yeah. I can't do our email either. Can we put something, can, can we do something on Facebook that says, check out the website? Or can we...
Gary, do you have anything to add to this?
Well, you can link, you just...
I, I do it, you know...
No, Gary, weren't you talking about bulletin boards?
Right, yeah, I wanted, I was waiting until I...
Okay, sorry, all right.
Yeah, I think there's, there is more, way more people than we realize are not hooked up to the internet, have a phone that is hooked to the wall, and they are completely not plugged into the internet. So we miss all of them. And I feel like a, a community bulletin board outside a raise, which we're so close to getting. And we, and we just need to, we need to decide that we want to do that and spend the money. It could be as much as $1,000 to have a weatherproof bulletin board, but I feel that would be a handy tool to get to all these people.
Here's, here's a good one. We send a bill out once a month, a water bill, and you put a little piece of paper in there, and then they read it, and they know exactly what we want them to know.
But they have to be kind of trained to read it, because you know how it is.
Yeah, you got, you got two pieces of paper in an envelope, and maybe you make one pink. And so they know that that's their, or maybe a pink one means emergency, and a yellow one means check this out, and a blue one means happy birthday, I don't know. But it's free, that way it's free, except for the 600 pieces of paper that you have to print. I mean, it's...
Well, I think all of it's good. I don't know that there's, we can't just...
No, no, yeah, right.
Try to do better. We, there's so many things we could do better than we do, but we're, we're a work in progress.
Money, I, I am afraid that we are going to find ourselves in financial trouble very, very quickly here.
Some of this stuff doesn't cost money, though.
That's what, doesn't cost much to put a piece of paper in an envelope.
Right.
No, and, and I agree, there's, but I just, like, I think that we should be, one of our primary thoughts when thinking of reaching out or, or, well, on, we had a, didn't we have a public information subcommittee at the port, Pat, or something? What was that, an outreach? Do you remember that?
Well, we were also gonna set up, we were trying to set up our website so people can sign up for, I mean, weren't we trying to get, like, the MailChimp integration with our website so people can sign up?
We don't have MailChimp yet?
I think we're...
There's a lot of people...
I think that's in progress, isn't it? Isn't that in progress, do you think? Joseph? Yeah. So that's another thing in progress, you know, people getting the notices, and then if they, and I, I would say, you know, I mean, we know this agenda was, you know, kind of thin because we didn't, we had to, it came out quickly, and then Joseph wasn't here. There's reasons why it is, but I think, you know, having clear agendas that explain what the thing is about also helps so people can look at the agenda and say, oh, they're talking about this, as opposed to they're talking about the universe of everything around this.
Right.
You know? That would really help, too.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
No, it is, because I think a lot of times people show up really angry, and they don't even really...
They don't need to be.
They don't need to be. And they've riled up their friends, and there could be economic impact, right? There are people missing work, I'm gonna take the day off because I gotta be at this meeting because they're trying to put a bump camp in my backyard or something, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, that's what, I guess that was derogatory, I didn't mean to... I said that with a...
And I don't expect us to solve this. I don't expect us to solve this problem tonight, but I, you know, I just keep nagging on it because I think it's really, really important. And of course, I love the idea of town hall meetings, just say that one more time.
I think we should do it.
There you go.
We, we talked about, uh, last time, a town hall meeting related to the, possibly related to the police levy. Um, and just to talk about a few considerations, I've reached out to try to do maybe another talk at the senior center or something about that, to try to, uh, reach out to the community to help people understand the importance of the police levy. So, um, and we didn't schedule a workshop, we didn't schedule a town hall about that. We could, or we could, you know, wait.
As long as they understand it's a renewal, I think there's some keywords that we may have, I don't know if we got them in, in or not on our ballot language.
Carefully on that town hall. I can't remember exactly last time, but it's like we couldn't advocate, we could only stay fat.
So I don't...
Well, that was, that was as...
I also think, yeah.
It was as...
Private citizens?
We could do a lot as private citizens. I think we might be convoluing the two, the sheriff's levy and the, and the...
I'm talking about between the first and the second vote, and we had that town hall meeting to try to explain that it was a, there's a reduction, not an addition. And I remember being stifled on what we could say.
I, I was thinking that maybe we don't need to do a town hall. If we could do things like talk to different groups or get out and do, like, I was hoping to do a letter to the editor, if people can share information.
Gary's got a, that envelope right there that I gave Gary, that's got some excerpts from the minutes that outlined how important the, the council at the time thought certain keywords were. And I read and apologize for not getting it here sooner because I think it's that important, but, um, if you do any advertising or, or talking, there was just, there's just a few words that we ended up thinking were really, really important, and one of them was renew.
Yeah.
And, and, and lower rate, it's a lower rate, it is, it's, it's a lower rate. It's a reduction, you're saving money. Save money, vote yes.
It's a renewal of the same rate that we had last night, but it was a reduction previously.
From the previous rate. I mean, there's things that you, that are, that are, it's not...
Yeah, okay, well, we've talked about this before, but so that, I just wanted to tell you, I've been trying to do some work on that. I know Wiz has too. And, um, also, you know, we had talked about workshop, uh, topics, and I don't know, it seems like that kind of stalled out, but one of the ones that seems like it's important is that email training. I don't know, is that still a high priority, John, or is that kind of? How are you feeling about that? That seemed like for a while it was our, our system was crashing.
Are we doing better?
Are we doing better? I know I'm not, because I didn't learn.
We're gonna do one-on-ones.
Well, I thought we said not to do one-on-ones, I'm happy to be, happy to do a one-on-one, but what is your...
Yeah, I think, um, we would have to pay if we're gonna use our, uh, contract service provider. That would be very expensive. And Andrew thinks he could do one-on-ones with you all.
Oh, great, okay.
At a very, uh, reduced rate. I don't know if he knows how to fix Pat's email, or Gary's email, or Perry's email, who are not getting our email, and, um...
I'm, I'm finally getting mine.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
I have 5,000 emails, just no new ones. Okay, so...
So we just talked to Andrew, set up a time, that's what the plan is now? Okay, thank you for helping me understand that.
And to circle back on, like, continuing action items or future, I talked with you earlier about the job descriptions, and you showed me that shared file, but none of us have access to that. The only people that have access to that are people that are on the system in the office. So that's why I was like, so even if you could get those out to us, it doesn't need to be, uh, an agenda item, but we need to start looking at those.
Yeah. That's a big deal.
Yeah.
And John thought we had access to it, and we don't. So I know it's a glut of information, but we need to start chewing on that. It doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda item, but I would like to get that in our hands as soon as possible. Right, because that was a high priority, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Council rules.
Is, is that something we want to, like, put a workshop on into the future? I mean, I would think we'd have to do preparation to make it work, but I think the next workshop date was something like in November, you know what I mean? Do we want to put something, think about that, or? Do you think we'd have time, John Huddle, to, like, have our act together to think about that by then, or?
I don't know, I mean, we've got personnel rules, contracting rules, job descriptions. Um, those are three kind of big ones. You know, so I don't know what the status is of our personnel rules. Uh, those have been being worked on since 2022, and then they weren't because of labor negotiations or something. So, um, that's, those are as big as job descriptions, if not bigger. To me, the job description piece primarily, um, Dina's job description was revised in, like, 2021, and she was hired in 2022, so I think that's fairly straightforward. Joseph is the one who is doing something completely different, so that's more important. And then Dina, I think, is pretty much squared away, but I'd have to ask David about that. And then my job description and David's job description, what I've been doing there is working on a hybrid job description for, uh, both city administrator, finance director. See if that can't work, so...
Right, and, and well before you or Gary Freeman were ever here, this is something that the council wanted to take up, was to look at those job descriptions, because well before anyone else was here, we had pro temp, we were still in that transition. So for a year and a half, we've been like, we need the job description, we need the job description so we can have this conversation. And now you're here, and you're taking the ball and carrying it, and that's awesome, but we still want to have that conversation, and it was one of our top three priorities. As far as the council rules, I still sit on, we should be able to educate ourselves on the council rules. There's a book, and we can read it, and it's pretty cut and dried, but it is. That was a high priority, was the job composition, so that we can put our head around how we're moving forward.